Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the regular meeting of North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission for Thursday, February 2nd. In attendance are regular members, Algren, Sienna, Leskovich, Galdenzi, and Dulak. Also attending is our newest alternate member, Trish Mace. First order of business is the review and approval of the minutes from the January 19th meeting, which everybody has a copy of.
You, me, Fran, and Ron were here.
Yep.
Make a motion we accept the minutes of January 19th, 2017. Make a motion we accept the minutes of January 19th, 2017.
Second.
Alright, so again, it was just me, Fran, Ron, yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the pass is four to zero, and Dave abstains. Okay. Next order of business, Carrie, do you have any updates on PZ application 2016-13?
Yes. Okay. One of the questions at the last meeting was regarding the fee in lieu of open-
Oh, did I go, no, I'm sorry.
Yes, public hearing, right?
I'm sorry.
Yes?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay. So there's a question about the fee in lieu of open space. So I did look at that calculation. My calculation was per acre, which was not the entire, looking at the entire parcel. So it was low. So the correct amount is 24,590.
Versus what?
Versus 4,900.
Okay.
So that's because the parcel, again, is not being subdivided. It's being, it will be owned by the association. So that was 10% of the fair market value. The fair market value is 245,900. So 10% of that, again, is 24,590, which the applicant was made aware of that change. So I apologize for the confusion, and again, looking at it from an acre standpoint, not the whole parcel. We also have comments from Lieutenant Lovelace, from the police department, and he had some concerns about the distance of the entrance way to 22. So this is dated January 23rd. He said, "I have reviewed the accompanying documents regarding the applicant proposing to rezone the parcel at 50 Clintonville Road. In reviewing this, it is important to note that I am a certified fatal accident reconstructionist and have received advanced training in this area. In reviewing the proposal, I have found an area of concern. The applicant is proposing the exit entrance to the property to be located across from the exit entrance of the business firelight. I measured this distance to be approximately 126 feet. Using this distance, I calculated the daytime and nighttime deceleration to stop distance at 25 miles per hour and 35 miles per hour. Using this formula, I calculated the distance traveled by a person's reaction time. The national standard reaction time for daytime is 1.6 seconds and nighttime 2.3 seconds. Also used a .80 drag factor. The daytime distance at 25 miles per hour with reaction distance is approximately 85 feet. The nighttime distance at 25 miles per hour with reaction time is approximately 110 feet. Daytime distance at 35 miles per hour with reaction distance is 133 feet, and the nighttime distance at 35 is 168 feet. These calculations are based on normal roadway and sightline conditions. The nighttime conditions pose a significant risk to those entering Firelight Place and those exiting out onto Firelight Place. This roadway already is subject to heavy traffic from the commercial businesses. My suggestion would be to move the entrance exit of the proposed development north to allow more distance for drivers to obtain a safe stop. I would also suggest that no parking signs be posted along both north and south travel lanes of Firelight Place. Any questions, please feel free to contact my office. Respectfully, Lieutenant James Lovelace." That was also-
Was it second, about the second, stop, stop signs?
No parking.
Oh, no parking.
On both north and south travel lanes of Firelight Place.
So is this the exiting onto 22 or onto the road exiting to 22?
It's on Firelight Place.
It's the road.
Which is the road that connects to 22.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so it's not, yeah, alright, so you're saying it was-
He's looking at the trap, the reaction time on Firelight Place, which is where they would exit onto or come off of.
Is that higher or lower than on 22? His calculations?
Wouldn't you mean higher?
Because Firelight Place is the driveway, basically.
Yes.
To go to the ice skating rink.
Yes.
Here's where they're exiting.
Or part of Firelight.
So nobody feels-
You're saying he's calculating people exiting the development onto Firelight Place.
He's calculating the drag, the reaction time of people going up and down Firelight Place and what would happen if someone's pulling out of the proposed development, how much time they have to stop.
So instead of going to driveway, turn around and go here.
At 25 miles an hour or 35 miles an hour.
But how, do cars, can, when you're coming, when you're on Firelight, can you do 25 or 35? I mean, you can't even get up to 35. I mean, I'm not, I mean, it's only-
Well, if you're coming, may, maybe if you're coming from the hockey rink? Yes.
Yeah, but again, it's 35 on that? I mean, I don't, I mean, I could not, I mean-
I would hope not, but yes, they are, I'm there every weekend.
I thought, originally I thought you were talking about 22 until you just clarified, you have Firelight, I mean-
Well, I was also talking about 22 also, then with hindsight, that's a state road. That wouldn't be the town's, the town couldn't do a traffic study on a state road.
Not, not only that, but they're not changing, they're not adding a new entrance or exit onto 22.
Right.
I, you know, I understand the question about adding traffic possibly, you know, adding some traffic to 22, but he's just looking at the reaction time based on entrance, entering and exiting the proposed development on Firelight.
Okay. And what times during the day did he do his study?
Well, I mean, he did, he just did, he just did basic reaction. He wasn't doing a general reaction, reaction time. It's not, it's not having to do with any traffic.
It's not volumes, it's not traffic volumes.
I mean, I think it'd be worse on 22 than on Firelight itself because-
Well, again, I think they're, he's looking at something different. He's looking at reaction time based on the location of the driveway, not volume of traffic.
He, he, yeah, basically, 'cause there is, there is a, you know, during certain parts of the day, whether it's a hockey or whatever, there's a lot of tra, there's traffic on to Firelight. So he's basically saying, asking to move it north so that if you move it north, this reaction time may change because you can see better coming out.
We have a longer time to stop.
Right, that's all that is. It has nothing to do with number of cars or whatever, my, he's just saying that based on where it is that you, there would be less reaction time for a car that's coming out of, from the hockey rink or from 22. So, I mean, that, that's all that is.
I also have a memo from the fire marshal, dated January 16th. A preliminary plan review is conducted in accordance to NFPA, CGS, Connecticut State Fire Prevention and Fire Safety Codes. The following requirements are made. Due to overall combustible load and distances between structures, hydrants are required for this project. This shall utilize a looped hydrant system. There shall be no dead-end hydrants. Roadway entering and exiting requirements for fire department apparatus accessibility shall be as such to accommodate the apparatus, including the fire department aerial tower Those were the other department head comments. I have a comment letter from a resident that I'll pass down. I'll let you, I don't know if you want to read through it, just 'cause it's kind of long and then can summarize concerns. This is from Scott Small.
So, just to that, to maybe even both of these comments, because these, this is just a conceptual, right?
Yes.
So these comments more, are these comments more site plan?
For the next stage, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. I think that, well, providing-
Yes, no, I just want to make sure I'm here.
No, that's true, that's true.
There's some overlap, there's some overlap, but yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, it's a good point in that we, if the commission were to entertain an approval, you couldn't condition the approval with these.
Yeah, exactly, that's what, that's what I was thinking through in my head. I think this is more deeper for the next phase. Do you agree? Yeah, we're in a still public hearing, right?
Mm-hmm. I have one other letter.
Okay.
So I have another letter from David and Patricia Ardito. Hello, my wife and I are homeowners in town. Our address is nine Clintonville Road in Norfolk. We wish to express our concern with the above referenced application being approved. Traffic pattern on Route 22, Clintonville Road in this area is already congested and dangerous. This addition of 25 additional homes on a parcel of less than seven acres would only contribute to this congestion and make travel in this area more dangerous. There are school bus stops in this area, our daughters included, and this road is already heavily traveled for the size and contours of it. Also, in reading the P, the minutes of the PZ commission meeting from 1/5/17, it appears that there may be possible wetlands issues to contend with. This is also a major, major concern as there are several homes serviced by wells in this area. In conclusion, we would like to formally state our opposition to PZ application 2016-13 for the reasons stated above. Due to other commitment, we will not be able to attend the PZ meeting on 1/19/17 to state these concerns in person, but do wish to them, do wish them to be known by the PZ commission. I informed them that we weren't meeting on this, so I don't know if they're here this evening, but just wanted to read that into the record.
So still, since it's still a public hearing, the public hearing's still open if anybody would like to speak on this application?
I would.
Well, oh, you can, you can come up, it's still open, yeah?
She's the attorney representing, okay.
I don't know if you wanted to speak first or after all some, after the public comments?
Probably both.
Okay.
But I think it would help if I, if I clarified some things now, and as usual, I have handouts. I'm, I'm sorry, Diane Whitney for the record. The first hand, and there's nothing startling in these, but the first thing I have to give you is the concept plan and a copy of the survey. There were questions before because we were, we were contemplating or considering changing the boundaries of the, of the site, and we're not doing that. So really, all this is, is the concept plan and the survey that shows the property without those changes. So it's a little, it's a little clearer about what you're considering. And this is the concept plan. I have sent these to, let's do the before.
I have, I have one.
Oh, you have one?
Yep, here, if you don't want to get that large.
Thank you.
So Mary, I'm going to have this as exhibit one, and then exhibit-
And the second one is simply the survey, again, to show you the correct boundaries of the property and also to show you the wetland, the upland review area. I had stated last time that, that we're not in the wetland upland review area, and that was wrong, we are, so we will need wetland commission approval for this application.
Is there an order that needs to refer if you need a wet answer?
And the third thing-
At the same time? Before or at the same time?
The third thing is, there was a question, we had given you a traffic report with our application, and there was a question about whether it was done by a traffic engineer. So I have the resume of the traffic engineer also. For members of the public, I have some additional copies of these things. I don't think I had enough for everybody, but when I-
Can I have one from the traffic engineer?
That's not the report, it's a resume.
Can you do I get a copy of the report?
It's in the file.
Yeah, yep. I'm not going to take her now, she can come by the office. If anyone would like cop, additional copies, you can come by the building department or planning department office tomorrow, and I'd be happy to have you look through the file and make copies of anything for you.
Well, of course, what we're asking for, excuse me, I'm sorry, was a question?
Oh, no, no.
Oh, what we are asking for is to rezone this property.
Excuse me, yeah, excuse me, can you, can you keep the cross talk down, please? It's hard to hear. Thank you.
A lot of the details of this, of this proposed development will really come at the next stage. Will come, because the next stage will be the wetlands application, the special use application, and the site plan application. And at that point, the, the project will be fully developed and the details will be dealt with. A lot of the details that I know are raising questions at this point really are not relevant to the, the zone change. The zone change, as, as you all know, doesn't allow us to put a shovel in the ground. The zone change simply allows us to go forward with the planning process to, to propose for you, to you, a detailed plan. Four purposes of the zone change, the things that you need to consider are, does it accomplish the purpose of giving flexible zone housing choices in North Branford? Does the plan provide for maintenance of streets, drainage, landscape, and buffer areas? And you have a proposed maintenance agreement in your application materials. Sorry, I can't talk tonight. Are the streets adequate and will not generate traffic so as to overload the streets? You have a small traffic report in the application materials, and the purpose of that was to really talk about the, the amount of traffic that would be generated by this, by this application. And it's a very minimal amount. If I recall correctly, it's less than 10 trips during the, both the morning and the evening peak hours. And actually, most of the traffic generated from this will not be during the peak hours. So are the streets adequate to cover that, that amount of traffic? Are the utilities adequate? And is the, is the plan in harmony with the area and cited to protect neighboring property values? As to the police and the fire, fire report, fire marshal's report, those will certainly be taken up at the next stage. And it's very possible we will move the entrance, but we will, in any event, we will work with your town staff to come up with a plan that everybody agrees is safe from a, from all You've heard about the, the change in the fee in lieu of open space, which is $24,590, which is fine, and I think that's, that's everything. As you know, the plan that we're showing you, the concept plan, is simply a concept plan. It does tell you that we can develop this within the limits of this, of this regulation, that the density is not greater than what is allowed in, in this area. But it, but questions about density, about buffer, about maintenance, about landscaping, about the entrance and exit, will all come at the, at the next stage. The question really now is, is this property appropriate for a development of this kind with the general concept plan that you, that you have, understanding that the concept plan will undoubtedly change as we work with town staff to refine it? Do you all have any questions for me?
I do not.
Thank you.
So if you, if you have a question, or if you want to make a comment, please come up to Mike, state your, state your name and address and your comment or question.
Hi, my name is Mary Pazone. I live at 29 Clintonville Road, Norfolk, Connecticut, and my house is the house that faces that driveway. And I have been there since 2005.
What, what driveway?
You want me to show you the map?
Are you talking about on, coming out of Firelight? The Firelight, okay, no, that's why, I just wanted to make sure.
Here's Firelight, here's my house.
Okay, yep, alright, I just wanted to make sure, yep.
Okay, now here are my concerns. One, this town, there's a stream that goes by, and I fought with this town for over a year to have piping taken out of the back of my house from the street above down because the water literally ran this way, the stream ran that way, flooded everybody's backyard. Since they took that pipe out, I don't get flooded, okay? Very minimal. I went through Katrina and everything, I did not get flooded. The dirt's back, everything's copacetic. What bothers me is it took me over a year, and I had to get an attorney, and I was ready to sue this town because the town said the stream wasn't their responsibility, so go to the state. The state said, no, it's the town's responsibility. And when it came down to the bottom line, none of you wanted to know anything. And now here we are again. Now, a couple of years ago, they decided on the street behind me, they were going to add all these extra sewer drains, which I didn't know anything about, or I would have fought that too. So now even more water comes down. But we're still pretty good, okay? Now you're going to put 25 houses across the street, where's that drainage going? In the flood, in the stream? To flood us out around the bend? What's that doing to our property? You're allowing, or going, they're trying to get you to allow, to put 25 houses on land that's going to give them maybe a quarter of an acre. Everybody else in that area has a half an acre or better, and when we come to this town to do anything with our property, first thing out of everybody's mouth is, oh, you can only build on such a percentage of your land, and you're usually denied for anything else. And I've done it with other property I have in Norfolk. The next issue is the tractor trailers. If you put a light there, that's right in front of my house. My house gets dirty enough from the traffic. With tractor trailers sitting there, starting up, revving down, is anybody ever going to sleep in my house? The traffic light's going to blink in my house? I can't tell you how many street signs, mailboxes. Last year, a car came up on my lawn and hit my dog. And you, you're going to tell me the traffic over there is alright? I rescued a girl out of her car with a broken arm. The accidents there are astronomical. And that's not even a road, that's a driveway. And the amount of ambulances that go up there for accidents and things going on in Firelight and fire trucks is enough. Now you're going to put 25 houses in, and to say the percentage of time that people are going to drive is ridiculous, because people work way past 55 now. So they do leave at prime time and come home at prime time. Sometimes I wait 15 minutes to get out of my driveway. And if there's a light there with all the noise and the, the pollution, what is my property going to be worth? So I want it on the record that if you agree to do this, I have a lawyer, I know my property value's going to go down, I have never been flooded since 2005. If I get flooded, I'm holding this panel responsible because this should never happen. That land is so wet back there, and you have nowhere to put the drainage but in that stream, and I know the people around the bend, we are going to suffer. So I, I totally oppose it. I've already spoken to my attorney, and I'm going to fight this to the bitter end because there's no way I will have any peace in my house if you put 25 houses over there. And we couldn't, we couldn't even make our garage two feet bigger because our land, the amount of land we have, and we have over an acre, a half an acre. So what, you break the rules whenever it's convenient for something? No. So I'm sorry about my voice, I have a very bad head cold, but I had it come this time because this, this is just ridiculous that this is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody else, let's speak, your name and address, please?
Alan Bale, 64 Idlewood Drive, that's Norfolk. I'm going to, I'm going to ask two questions and make a comment to the residents of the town. I'm going to start out by handing out this article from the Connecticut Log for the New York State. This article says that residents can, so that's an article entitled, "Removing Age Restrictions on Residential Developments." It says that residents can give up the age restrictions to improve resale value, subject to approval by the zoning board, and the zoning board can be overridden if the community uses the Affordable Housing Statute. If you read it carefully, the age restriction can actually be removed before anyone moves in. There's no, there's nothing to stop it, except these guys will approve it in the first place. There's no statute in Connecticut. So first question is, how do you think you're going to enforce the over 55 age restriction? Second question I have is, if this high-density development is approved, how do you expect to prevent any other high-density developments from going up? Every developer will apply for an amendment. And finally, my comment, we've already addressed some of this. We buy our houses in this town and pay a price based on an understanding of building lot sizes. There's no doubt that some property values will decline due to removal of zoning regulations. If this development is approved, I recommend that we hire legal counsel to represent our financial interests and also seek an investigation from the state attorney general's office- financial interests and also seek an investigation from the State Attorney General's Office of the zoning amendment and the conditions under which it was put in place.
I can answer the one question about the zoning regulations. If, a zoning regulation could be submitted for a change by anybody in the public. It comes to us, we, we have to accept it and we have to look through it. Doesn't mean we have to change it. So that's on a case-by-case basis. When those, where any regulation or application that comes to us. So that's, we, we just don't change them. We just don't arbitrary change any zoning, any zoning or any zoning regulation. In, in the other part, I'll have the applicant answer your question on that, on that one. Would anybody else like to speak? Please. Name and address, please.
My name is Steve Kenning. I live at 79 Woodvale Drive. Woodvale Drive is the street that dead ends right up against the, the applicant's property, right behind the, right behind the fire, I mean, right behind the skating rink. I, I couldn't make the other, the other meeting, I was on a business trip, but I, I read in the paper what took place. And the thing that concerns me the most about this, I also, also agree with the first two speakers, it seems like too dense a housing for the size of the property. But my main concern is kinda twofold. One is, you're putting in 55-year-old or older people in this home, in these places, and, and you want to waive the, the open space and instead have them pay a $25,000 fee. I think people of that age are gonna be, you know, if, whatever size, whether it turns out to be 25 houses or 15 or whatever it is, they're gonna be looking to, in their spare time, to walk around. So I'm pretty much opposed to not having any open space in this property. The owner of the property has lots of other space there, there's space behind the fire rink, there's a space on the other side of the river. Quite a bit of that should be allocated to open space, or whatever is the proper percentage that the town requires. So I'm opposed to the, the fact to just waive it and pay a $25,000 fee. That's, you know, not much of a fee, I think, for what they're asking here. The other thing is, is it's not exactly relate to this application, but I wanted to make the board aware of it. That property behind the ice rink is extremely noisy. There's four-wheelers running up there, there's motorcycles running up there, it's almost endless noise on the weekends. And I talked to the owner a few times about cutting back on that. I, I lived, I've gone over there in the summertime, and, and men are driving up with trac, with trailers, unloading four or five four-wheelers for the kids to run around. And they come back hours later, and there's, and they're running all over the property. It's as noisy as you can be. The other thing that's even worse is on the other side of the river, there's a remote control airplane club that flies endlessly. I know when it's 10 o'clock exactly, every Saturday and Sunday, because at 10 o'clock and one second, they have a self-imposed rule, they don't start flying till 10. At 10 o'clock every Saturday and Sunday, they start flying. It's like having guys run chainsaws next to your house from 10 o'clock at night in Ju, June and July, when it doesn't get dark till 9 o'clock. They're flying at 9 o'clock at night. When my kids were little, 20 years ago, I'd be putting them to bed at 8:30, and they said, daddy, I can't fly, it's too noisy, I can't sleep, it's too noisy here. And I, I bought this house a long time ago, I've lived in town since 1978. I bought this house, property, about 25 years ago. I knew there was planes flying, though, I did tell you the truth, I didn't know how noisy it was. So I've talked to the owner before about seeing if you could get the, the owners to reduce it, maybe every other day. Doesn't happen. I've talked to the owners of the club, president of the club, they just blow you off, they say they got more, more members, they need to fly all the time. So I understand that this isn't directly applicable to this application. When I came here, I thought, before I just got the map, I thought the, the homes were gonna go on that property behind the fire rink, the fire, I mean, behind the skating rink. I realize now they're not. But it's still awfully close to all this noise. And I'll tell you, if you're, if you're coming to look to buy one of these properties, and you come on a Saturday, and you look around, and you see four-wheelers running around that property, and you see, and you hear, what's that noise? What's that heck of a noise? And you see the planes flying there, I'd be surprised if anybody buys these houses. I mean, you know, I, I see you're smiling, but you don't live there.
Steve, I've talked to you many times.
Please, please. Excuse me, excuse me. Nothing has happened.
Excuse me. Sir, please direct him here.
Okay, sorry. That's all I've got to say, pretty much. I know it doesn't, not exactly apply to what you're talking about here, but I wanted to make the board aware of this also.
Anybody else like to speak? Your name and address, please.
Hi, Don firstly, Marjorie Drive. I'm actually going to talk about the actual, I think it's the zoning regulations. And it says that in order to have this age-restricted housing district is to allow the use of flexible design techniques on parcels of land on which development under conventional zoning standards may not be constrained by topography, soil, rocks, wetlands. So basically, it's saying you can't build on it, normal houses, that's why you're doing this. And if it's a five-acre lot that, from what I've heard, is relatively flat, there's no reason why you couldn't put normal houses on it.
Well, it's, it's
It's just what they wanna do.
It would require a, a zone change because it's not residential.
No, it is residential.
I'm sorry. It is residential. I'm sorry, I'm thinking industrial. Sorry, my stuff, my phone.
Yeah, like the fee in lieu of the open space, so they're paying the $24,000 instead of having the open space. But because of that, they're gonna be able to add another five houses. Because if they didn't have the open space, that would be subtracted from the six acres, from the amount of houses you could build. But since they're paying the fee, they actually can use the full acreage, so they're actually gonna be able to build an additional five houses for $25,000. Is that true? Because they're paying the fee, they can use the entire parcel for the five units per acre.
The zone, the text amendment, or the text for the zoning does say up to five units per acre, so yes. But I think that if the commission were to entertain this, then the details of how many homes would be worked out at that stage. So it's, is that
It would be the next stage.
Right, so it's not a guarantee, exact swap? It would depend on the layout, but I, looking at it black and white, they could go up to five
By five per, per acre.
And that would, that part of it would be, it would only come into play in the next step when they started to do the site plan.
Right.
Because this is a concept, this is just a generic concept. So there's a whole nother process that would go into exactly what you're saying.
Also, under the, you know, for this meeting, the commission shall have found that the age-restricted housing district is in harmony with the area in which it is proposed and cited to protect neighboring property values while respecting the site's natural and man-made features. I think you've heard from some of the residents around there that this will not be protecting their property values, that it'll be reducing their property values. And also respecting the site's natural and man-made features, it sounds like they're also going to be filing something under wetlands, which means that they're probably going to want to build within the wetland buffer or something like that, or else they wouldn't need to apply to wetlands. So that's under what we are considering right now for actually applying this age-restricted housing district to this property. So that's part of what this meeting is for. That, that one was taken care of. And parking spaces, we don't care. There's nothing actually in this ordinance that says that anybody under 55 can't live with the people. It says that somebody has to be 55, they can have a spouse, they can have an attendant that's 21 or over, but there's nothing actually explicitly saying nobody else can live there. Just to let you know, that it could happen in the future. And people over 55, okay, we're not elderly. And not all of us are nice neighbors. I mean, a lot of us are probably like, you know, try to respect our neighbors, but there's people of every age that don't respect their neighbors. And you have people in this area who are now gonna have 25 new neighbors. Out of that, there's gonna be some neighbors that are not gonna be good neighbors. And they're gonna be right up against somebody who used, was maybe expecting one house, two houses, you know, they weren't expecting 25 new neighbors. So, you know, now there's gonna be more of a problem there. You're going to have, and 55, the reaction time that he was speaking of, if you're over 55, your reaction time is slower. So, you know, the, the numbers that she was given by the, the police lieutenant, then, you know, if you're older, your reaction time is slower. So those numbers are actually increased. So that's another reason why they might wanna move that. And the people who buy these, you know, she said that, you know, people who would buy these are the ones who don't want a big property maintained. You know, they want something small, they don't mind living close to their neighbors. But they may not know about the ATVs or the planes. And once they move in, those of us who are over 55 tend to complain more. And you're gonna have a lot more police come out there. And if any, you know, traffic, you know, ice, the ice pavilion, whenever a hockey gang gets out, there's tons of, I, I'll call them hockey moms, you know, driving up and down. When firelight gets out, you know, you have a very large employer there, you have a lot of people that work there. When they get out, they're all rushing to get home. And then you have, you know, a 55 and over community with people that are not in a rush. And like someone else said too, if you're 55, you're still working. And most likely, both people are working. So you're having 50 people commuting. So not, that's not 10 cars, that's 50 cars coming in and out of there every morning and night. Because many people still have to work to 55. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Please. Your name and address, please.
Hi, Nancy Warfield, 52 Clintonville Road. I was here at the last meeting, so I don't have anything new. I just wanna reiterate my feelings about it. You know, I am the property right adjacent to this property, and I'm very opposed to it. For all the reasons that people have expressed and that I expressed the last time that I was here. And I just wanna thank other people for coming out and sharing their views about it. But, and I have the same concerns, including the wetlands, how is this gonna affect my well water? What's it gonna do to, you know, the, the natural life that's there? Besides the pollution, the traffic, the noise, and everything else. So I just wanted to say I'm here again, I'm still against it, and I appreciate other people coming out. And thanks for the time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Please. Your name and address, please.
Kathy Rajunas, 60 Clintonville Road. Live in the condominiums that are adjacent to this proposed zone change. And one comment that I was concerned about last time from Diane Whitney, the attorney, is that an owner has the right to develop their land the way that they would like to if it's within the zoning regulations. So if this zoning regulation is approved, they have the right to put 30 houses here. So even though they come with a proposed layout for 25, it is their right to put 30 homes. And certainly, she was right in some respects, that people like to be the last person to develop. But that wasn't me. I liked, I wanted to build my house, I mean, buy my house where I did because I knew what would be around me. I figured I would potentially have four or five new neighbors, not 29, 30 new neighbors. And that's really what they're able to do, is give me 29 to 30 new neighbors. This, I think, is absolutely ridiculous, this plan. And it concerns me that when I hear you talk tonight, that that could be discussed at the next step. It concerns me that the next step is even anticipated right now. It's like, to me, and I don't know if anybody else here feels like it, that this might already be a done thing, when we're already talking about this will happen in the next step. So that's just my concern, I'm not saying that's correct, but that's the impression that that term is giving us. So I don't mean to disrespect anyone with that, but it is the way I interpreted that comment.
And then maybe that's just the way, by saying that we'll discuss it in the next one, those, that's part of the process, the next step, like, one of your concerns is the density. So it's not a done deal that it's 25 houses or 30 houses.
Exactly. It might be 30.
What I mean by discussion is that everything that you're saying now, we, that would be taken into consideration at the neck, when we started to have discussion about the density itself. This is just about the actual, is this piece of property suitable for what they're attempting to put there? But not just saying that, we understand that, you said the mag, they can have 30 houses or 25 houses. That's, there's, there's nowhere that's a done deal. There's, like you said, there's other things that go into a, a site plan. It's some of the things that have been mentioned, like the wetlands, you know, the flow and different things like that, that need to be presented to this commission at that time. So, no, by no means, if, if this was approved, it doesn't mean there's anything, it's, it's automatic 30 houses, it's automatic, or whatever it is, there's a whole nother process. So if we communicated that, we'll just take care of the, discuss that at the next step, it's a done deal. It's not the case. This hasn't been approved yet. And if it, if it was to be approved, then there's a process, the discussion you're having is very, very important for us to have.
But please understand, when I did purchase my, my home, I purchased it with the understanding what this land could potentially become. And, and this is not what I'm getting. But thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I just need some clarification on something.
We just got, you just, your name and address, please.
Mary Pizon, 29 Clintonville Road, Norfolk, Connecticut. Are you saying that you haven't agreed to any houses there yet? No, you haven't?
No, we, this is
Okay.
We haven't even got to, to this point yet.
Okay, so
Where it's even suitable, you know, where it has been voted on one way or the other to, if, if this property's even suitable for this.
Yeah, which I think it's not, but that's my personal opinion.
Correct.
When do you get to the point where you say, this is a no-go deal? How many hearings do you have to have before you get to that point?
Well, it's a two-phase public hearing. One is for what we're doing right now. And then if this was approved, then it would be a site plan where they would come, it wouldn't be just a concept, it would be their actual, uh, uh, site plan of exactly what they're gonna do.
Okay.
You know, where, how, how many houses, where they're gonna put them, where the driveway's gonna be, and how it's gonna be developed.
Okay.
So that's, so that's, it's a two-phase
Okay, so my next question is, if you approve it and there's a site plan, that's when we have to get the attorney to stop it from going further?
I'm gonna have to, like, I can't give any guidance on that.
Okay. I'll talk to my attorney. Okay, thanks.
Tom Dolvecchio, 847 Forest Road. Harry, just clarify, is this a special use permit or permitted use by right, the next phase on this project?
Special use.
Special use. So you have broad discretion, you could look at traffic, there's a lot of things that you could look at to essentially restrict the number of units. Even though they're proposing 25 or 30, because you have the special use permit, you certainly can restrict the number of units at that point. It's not a spec, it's not a permitted use of right.
Right.
So once a zone change is approved, essentially the project would be approved, correct?
No.
Is everyone in agreement with that? It's a special use permit, it's not a permitted use of right, with just a site plan review.
Correct.
Alright, so you have
Right, just, just to, I mean, that's a good point, just to talk about the general process and not, it relates to this project, but
It's procedural.
It's, there's discretion, it's not ministerial, to use the legal terms. So, so this It's, there's discretion. It's not ministerial, to use the legal term. So, so this stage that we're looking at right now is the zone change. So there's, there's the maximum amount of discretion with the zone change. The commission can say that this doesn't fit within the character of the town. You can have many, many reasons as to why you approve it or you deny it. There's a lot of discretion. It's not just the, the criteria that are outlined in the regulations. That's part of it. But you have a lot of discretion. Same is true for what would be, if it were to be approved, the next stage. Again, with a special use permit, maximum amount of discretion. It's not just a site plan where if you meet the certain requirements, then the commission really has to approve it and it's considered ministerial, I think is the correct term.
All right. The other issue I want to raise too, and this, I think this occurred very early on, this, because it's a floating zone, okay, the text amendment was approved, what, in January of last year?
Uh, that sounds about right.
Okay. So because it's a floating zone, the text amendment wasn't appealable to the courts. So assuming the residents were aware that this text amendment was moving forward, the courts had determined because the floating zone doesn't apply to any particular parcel of property, it can't be appealed to the court. So this is really the first opportunity for the residents to really address the text amendment itself. Because they still preserve their right to appeal the text amendment itself. And, which is very unusual, because typically, once a text amendment passes, essentially you have fifteen days from the date of publication. But in this instance, they preserve that right to appeal the passing of that text amendment. Because it's a floating zone, so that you, the only way you demonstrate agreement is when it's kind of pulled and you're applying now the floating zone to a particular piece of property, which is what they're doing now. So this is the first opportunity for these folks here to actually address the text amendment itself. Because they really-
It was public hearings.
Yeah.
I think we, I think we even, during the public hearing, did we look at the parcels that could possibly be-
Well, you had, you had, and that's, that's the point I'm trying to make, is that I, I think that, and there's a lot of discussion about making some amendments on zoning regulations and notifications and so forth. But this is, I think, a good example of how many people are searching through the legal notices and are looking for these text amendments. Goes back to the propane issue, liquor, the whole thing. But it's unlikely that people at home are sifting through these. So is there a way, because you guys did a great job with this. You went through, you did the analysis, you identified the potential properties that could be impacted. And this is in a transition zone. But maybe, you know, you have the sixty-five day period to review the application, the text amendment for hearings. But maybe once you've gone through that initial analysis and you know which properties could be potentially affected, could you, through your notice provisions, then ask for a mailing? So they, because now you've determined which properties could be potentially affected.
Could I just suggest that maybe we bring this up under, you know, the town planning report and suggestion as a separate inter-
Right, it's just, it's just a thought. I know you guys are playing with the other issues.
Yeah.
And I'm just trying to clarify a few points procedurally. But one big thing, it is a special use permit. So you guys have very broad discretion in what you can do there. And, okay, the other issue is the density. Everyone's been talking about that. Cluster, typically what happens with a cluster development, typically this is an R forty zone, is that correct currently?
Yes.
Okay, so you're, and how many acres are there?
Six.
Six, okay. So you're, let's assume that there aren't any wetlands, you have six units, six single-family homes. And I think some of these folks are speaking of that. Essentially, with this zone change, it has a potential now to increase from six to potentially thirty. But you, once again, you have the broad discretion through the special use permit. But, you know, normally in a cluster development, there's an exchange, you're preserving open space for the right to develop a large density development. Is that, is that occurring here? Is that, is, you know, that's, you guys have gone through the text amendment, you studied that. And the only other question I have is on the text amendment, Harry, is it, does it apply to buildable acreage? So that, in other words, assuming there were wetlands on this parcel. And I, I'm not familiar with the parcel. But did they also get credit for the six units in the wetlands? So no, let's say it's a six-acre parcel, but two acres is wetlands, let's assuming, okay? Do they get credit for that two acres for twelve units? Because I don't think you restricted it to buildable acreage, did you? I can't remember.
I'm almost positive.
Did you? All right, so it does take into consideration-
We have to check that, but I-
The wetlands?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so would, that would restrict it further?
The usable lot goes back to the underlying, the existing definition that was in the regulations.
Okay, right, that's, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. All right, that's it.
Would, anybody else like to speak? Yeah, please.
I just got one little quick thing, Bill, about what he said about-
If you could just do, just for the record, please.
Oh, yes, the first lady, Marjorie Drive. Bill, what he said about the notices, I noticed in this week's sound, just came out, the town council is having a public meeting on the seventh. And they have a really nice notice here that goes and explains every little thing about what they're discussing. So if people do read this paper, they will have a great idea of what the public, the, the hearing is going to be about. So it would be great if the Planning and Zoning Board would do something like this with the papers to give notice. Because you notice that sometimes with these text amendments, people don't know what's going on. And they don't, I'm sure you noticed, they don't show up. And if people don't show up, it's not because they don't care, because they didn't know.
Thank, thank you.
Right.
Would anybody else like to speak? Would we like to rebut?
A number of things that have just been brought up. As you'll know from the traffic report that's in our application, the accident history at this site is three accidents in the last three years. So it's not a high accident area at all. Our drainage plan has to provide for adequate drainage to be treated on the site without problems to other property. That, you're not going to approve it if it doesn't do that. Nor is the Wetlands Commission. The talk about the small lot size, actually, lot size is a misnomer in this situation because there aren't separate lots. But the point of this is, is very, very different from your normal traditional zoning, where you have certain lot sizes. The point of this, in fact, is to put small houses close together to reduce the maintenance responsibilities of, of the people who live there. As you know, from dealing with the text amendment in the past, there are not very many sites in North Branford to which this zone can be applied. So it's not like you're going to have these sprouting up all over towns. There are very, there are very strict limits on where developments like this can be. And there, there are going to be few and far between. And clearly, these are not going to be attractive for a lot of buyers. They're only going to be attractive for people who want a small home with, with a small area around it to maintain. And who don't want a big yard, who don't want a half acre or, or a whole acre. It's a, it's a very unique population. It's a very unique development. And it's, it's only for a certain segment of the population. Someone mentioned affordable housing. This is not affordable housing. It will not be affordable housing.
Someone mentioned in the context of overriding-
Oh, please, please.
It will not be-
Then I, we should be able to make more comments after you rebut these.
Yeah, we're not, we're not done yet. We, the public hearing's still open. Yep.
It will not be affordable. And as you know, the age restriction is in the text amendment. We can't change it without your approval. So it's, we're not going to come in tomorrow and, and have to change it anyway. But even if we did, we can't do it without your, your approval. And the point of this is for age-restricted housing. So it wouldn't make a whole lot of sense for us to come in tomorrow and, and try and change it. As for investigation by the Attorney General's office, I was an assistant attorney general for a number of years. I think I can state pretty confidently that, number one, that office will not investigate this. And by any chance, if they did, they would find no problem with it. Because we know how to draft these in, in a way that survives legal scrutiny. There is open space in this, in this plan. I mean, there's open space for, for the enjoyment of the residents. There is not open space in the sense of town-sanctioned open space. Because there really is no space on this lot that the town wants for town-designated open space. There is space for residents to enjoy walking around and park bench and that kind of thing. But North Branford doesn't want anything from this site for official town-open space. Which is why the fee makes sense. Because then you can use that, that money to perhaps purchase other property and another place in town that does have some value for the town as a whole. There is no evidence that this kind of development reduces neighboring property value. There are a number of these in a number of other towns. And in fact, the, the evidence is that it increases the value of the neighboring properties. I believe that's, that's everything that was raised. Do you have-
There was one question about how the development will assure the age appropriateness of people purchasing into that. So-
It's right in the regulation. The enforcement mechanisms are right, right in there. It has been suggested that we might want to, by, by another developer in town, actually, that we might want to expand the age restriction. If we were to do that, you would have to approve it. And at this time, we don't have any plans to, to change what's already in. I'm sure you remember, we debated how to word that restriction over many, many public hearings. And I think we were all pretty satisfied with it. Do you have any other questions?
You need a comment about the tight spacing was to reduce the maintenance cost. Is that property maintenance, the landscaping maintenance, or the house maintenance? Because whether your house is on quarter acre house bigger, one acre, that still is the same price.
No, you still have to paint it and fix the roof.
So it's only the property, the, taking care of the landscape.
Mowing, mowing the lawns, shoveling the driveways, that kind of thing.
And the accident, I know there was some kind of disagreement behind you about the amount of accidents. Was the study done on Firelight, Firelight Lane, our drive, or the surrounding area around the property?
My understanding from the report that you have in the application is that it was done from the intersection of Firelight and Clintonville.
It's not a study, you just, there's a website, you go and pull up the numbers from, it's reported to the Connecticut DOT.
But I think, I mean, not that we intend to keep kicking the can down the road. But more detailed traffic information will come at the special use plan, yeah. And as I said, we'll be working with the police department so that when we come in with that application, it will be with a plan that, that meets your police department's requirements.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Here's a, I don't know if you have the copy of the traffic study that was in the presentation with you?
Two weeks ago.
Yes.
Yeah.
You have it? Okay. I just, that's my, that's my only copy.
No.
Do you want, you can look at it. I just want to get it back. Okay.
These developments like this are becoming more and more popular because the population throughout the state is aging. And this is a nice compromise. This is for people who would really like to have their own individual home. But without the great big lawn, the great big driveway, the, the headaches that come with, with that kind of ownership. So it's a very attractive compromise. It's very popular in, in other areas of the state. And they are selling well. And as a matter of fact, we've had a number of calls asking when these will be ready for sales. And we hope it'll be, not before too long. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If anybody would just like to comment, please direct it to the commission, please. Just name and address, please.
Alan Dale, sixty-four Idlewood Drive, Northford. For one thing, I have to say that you're giving, you seem to be giving some preference to the attorney for the developer who was allowed to speak first and is allowed to speak again.
Well, that's only, I mean, I just want, that's just because she answers some of the questions that the public had. So that's why she's able to, we give her an opportunity to speak. And then, you know, you could rebut as well.
The context in which I made a comment about affordable housing was that it is, there is a precedent, that that's one way, that one method that people have used to overturn age restrictions on developments. And this attorney is either being disingenuous or is actually ignorant of the many, many precedents of over fifty-five communities having to give up their over fifty-five status in this state and others.
Thank you.
Sorry, Gary. Mary Pizone, twenty-nine Clintonville Road. I was a court reporter for years. I worked for the AGs. I worked for Blumenthal. I worked for HUD. I worked for everybody. I know the rules. They could change fifty-five. If you're familiar with that case in Florida, you know that could be changed in a heartbeat. As far as three accidents, maybe the police came three times. Far more than three accidents. Someone drove up on my lawn last year and hit my dog. Police didn't come. There was no report. They couldn't do anything. Took down my mailbox. Nothing happened. Took down my neighbor's mailbox. Nothing happened. Took down the street signs. Nobody called the police. They had their car towed away. So three accidents? No way. That's absolutely nonsense. As far as building there, she still hasn't said where they're draining this water. Is it going in this stream that the town and the state both don't even want to take responsibility for? I mean, this is big issues. This has to be looked at. And I can't let it go because I know what's going to happen. So I will keep coming and keep speaking. And if I have to go to an AG in Hartford to get the information for you, the panel, I will gladly do it. So I'll come to the next meeting, see where we stand. Meantime, I'll be making my phone calls.
Thank you.
Sorry about my cold.
Would anybody else like to speak before we close the hearing? Because I think we can close it, or potentially-
Uh, we, we would actually need-
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Sorry. We would need to get an extension if we want to continue it. Because February ninth is the thirty-fifth day. And we don't meet again until February sixteenth.
So is there any reason to keep it open?
Can we refer to the public? I think we've got-
Then, I think we got everything we have. Well, I, you know where I stand. So, since I wasn't at the first meeting, I'm going to accuse myself of closing the hearing and participating in anything going forward on this. So- Okay. If, if you, if you want to close the hearing, then you would need a motion to do so.
Well, I think we have some outstanding questions.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying. If you have, if you have some questions, then let's, if you have, for the applicant, or, let's ask them. Because like Carrie just mentioned, if, we would need an extension to continue this to the next meeting, so-
We would need the applicant to grant the extension.
Right, so, yeah. So what are your, what are your questions?
My question is, the, the handout from the law tribune and on the, you know, the fifty-five restricted, is that discriminatory?
Eighty percent will.
And at what point, you know, can I, if I'm fifty-five and my married children move in with me as caretakers, would that cover the rule that, you know, a young family could live in the age-restricted area?
Could, can I answer that?
Yeah, please. Yeah, let's-
Um, we can't change the fifty-five rule. You can, but we can't. And for the caregiver, the way it's written now, if there is a person fifty-five or older who needs a live-in caregiver, and there's confirmation of that from a doctor, then a live-in caretaker under the age of fifty-five can live there.
With their family?
No, no, no. A, a caregiver.
Maybe we'll discuss this, I don't know which person. There's a thing in here that says, there's a non-restricted twenty percent serves as safe harbor for transitional situations. So-
Where's that?
Right at the third, second paragraph, right there. Fifty-five and over housing, the non-restricted twenty percent serves as a safe harbor. Fifty-five and over housing, the non-restricted twenty percent serves as a safe harbor for transitional situations. So, does that say if you have a child and they get divorced and so they have to move out of their house, can they come live with you for a period of time? And it says that they must be verified compliance every two years. What is the, do we have a compliance statute in our age-restricted statute?
Our age restriction doesn't provide for that.
That, that's my question.
That doesn't provide, no, you know, if, if, if you all decide that it should be modified, you can do that. But a, as it stands today, it doesn't provide for that.
Right, it just, it just says, "The development and dwelling units shall have in their deeds and leases declarations containing such age restrictions as a requirement for owning or occupying each unit."
Who enforces that?
I think that was one thing that we had kind of talked about, I, I'm forgetting exactly, but could be under this, I guess the zoning officer could enforce it. If there's reports from, you know, usual, a lot of our reports about things like this that we wouldn't know about otherwise come from neighbors. So it'd be a neighbor reporting something on another neighbor, we would go investigate. And then it would be a citation based on violate, if, again, having the proof based on violation of this zoning regulation.
For sale, would it be like a title search or something, would it uncover the deed?
Yeah. And the homeowners association would make it known also.
Would the zoning enforcement officer would have the teeth to do something?
Well, we would cite a, a violation of the zoning regulations.
But there you go, we're back to what teeth does this?
Yeah, okay.
You're, 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 you're violating what?
So, you know, just talking about other zoning violations, what, what power does he have? He, you know, issues a cease and desist, he can have a marshal issue a warrant. You know, de- depending on the situation, it, we, we use different tools.
Okay, but he, that way he does have teeth to have a marshal step in.
Right.
Anybody else? Can you name an address for the record, please?
Allen Vale, sixty-four Idlewood Drive. I, I strongly recommend we get an attorney for the town to investigate the Fair Housing Act because it's not being represented accurately. This community can be challenged as discriminatory if they don't allow twenty percent of the housing to, to be occupied by people under fifty-five. Furthermore, the way the federal law reads right now, there has to be one person in the house who's over fifty-five. There can't be anyone who's under eighteen years old. I'm not a lawyer, you guys need to look at one because this can be challenged. Doesn't matter what, what the amendment says, there, it is age discrimination if you don't follow the federal housing authority.
May I ask, do you know, because there are a lot of these over fifty-five developments along the shoreline and in this area, do you know of any being challenged in any surrounding towns?
Just read this, for one thing, this paper does talk about the precedents in Connecticut. But the precedents I'm familiar with are in Florida where it's challenged all the time. Any community that's been there for ten years or more is no longer going to be able to maintain fifty-five and older. It's challenged all the time. And, and I know the laws, and I know the law as well because the laws in Florida, they're federal laws that get, that govern this. I'm not a lawyer, I, as I say, I, you guys need to, to consult one. Because you're not hearing the whole story.
Do you know, do you know if there's any other more current documentation?
I don't have it.
Okay. Again, so we can, um.
Sorry, Mary Pizone, twenty-nine Clintonville Road. Turtle Bay, which is on the shore in Branford, was fifty-five and older. People in there were fifty-five and then they had their children move in because the parents were ill. Then they stayed, then they had babies. It is no longer fifty-five or older, the state said it was illegal to do that, and now anybody, any age could live there. So, again, I can go to an A G, get this information for you, because I've done these hearings.
When I can talk with the town planner in Branford?
Yes, please do. And I was going to rebut something else, but I'll wait, I'll be back. Don't you already have a fifty-five and older community here, isn't Montgomery Village fifty-five and older?
Yes.
And has that been challenged?
That's my logic.
That was Carrie.
Does anybody else have anything else? You, it's, you guys can discuss if you want to keep this.
We're discussing now, are we? The deed, is that something we have to wait for, if we wanted to hear back from them?
Um, regarding the public, are you asking about the public hearing?
Yeah, the town planner of Branford.
So, I, I mean, I can, I can reach out to him and, you know, the, and find out more information, but, um.
You guys have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I would also hit the town attorney.
Well, we, 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 the only way we can keep the public hearing open is if we get an, like, extension from the.
Right.
I'd make an extension.
What's that?
I would propose an extension.
It's not.
You can't propose it, the, uh.
Ask for an extension, okay, I propose, we ask for an extension. Did I answer your question? So I couldn't ask her, I'm proposing, we ask for it.
Ask them to make the extension.
Well, they have to, right.
We would grant an extension if, if you want it, I, I think that's regrettable. If it's the fifty-five and older, obviously, it's been in operation for a long time without challenge. I don't know why this would be any different. I don't know the date of that law tribune article, no, no one has supplied a copy for me.
April eleventh, two thousand and eleven.
Two thousand and eleven.
Thank you. I'll, I'll like it, is that an extra?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, there's, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else want, with one more copy, so we can.
If you, if you would like an extension, we would grant it, but I would suggest that there really is no reason for an extension. The, the reasons that, that this has come up are not a concern. And there is an age-restricted development here and in many, many, many other towns in Connecticut. And there's been no legal challenge in Connecticut that I'm aware of. And I'm sure I would have been aware of it had there been one. So if you would like an extension, we would grant it, it has to be in writing, I can email it to Ms. Duke has, tomorrow is still within the timeframe.
Yes, yes.
Um, if you'd like it. But I would ask instead that you close the public hearing tonight and, and make a decision. It's been a long time that we've been working on this.
You, you have to understand, we also have a fiduciary position where we're concerned about everyone. And questions have been raised, and if we're not completely satisfied in our own minds, we need a little time to research them also. There's, there's two conflicting camps and.
I do understand that, but, but you have had this regulation on the books now for about a year. And, um, there, there's been no concern. But I, but I understand what you're saying, and, and if you would like an extension, we will, I will email it to Ms. Duke has tomorrow morning. If I could say something, I don't know about the, um, about this, because I'm not a lawyer either. I suggest that we run it by our town attorney so that everyone is clear on it. The other thing I have to say is, I understand the, the people that are objecting. And you have legitimate obje- objections. The thing is that we do have to look at progress. Case in point, when I was going to school and I had to go from New Haven to Middletown, Route seventeen was no more than a dirt road. When I moved here in the seventies, the town in Northford had one store. It was the gas station, the mail place, and it was a grocery store.
And a barbershop and basement.
And those were all in that one little, well, it was a little store. Now, the town has grown tremendously. Seventy acres right across the street from me that used to be off-farm, used to love to go in there, ride our horses, take our dogs for a walk, now all houses. So, I mean, things do pro- progress. And we can't, we can't ignore the fact that the people that live in this town that are of this age bracket, that need to downsize, are the ones that built this town. They will continue, in my estimation, they will continue to support the town. So, you know, there's different ways to look at it. I, I just wanted you to understand that, um, you know, people will, the people live here, and they're the cleaners, the janitors, the firemen, all regular walks of life, who will now continue to participate in the town's activities and to shop in the town. Rather than, they want to stay in town rather than lose them to another town. The taxes are, you know, are certainly, the, the taxes would be any different than if you had six one-family houses there. And then if each house had, I think the average is two and a half kids, they're all going into the school system. You have, I, I know that ambulances were mentioned at one point. You'd have just as many ambulances and fire trucks going into a, a house, a six-house development than you will just because they're over fifty-five. So, I don't know how the board's going to feel, and I do feel that, as I said, we should probably at least talk to our attorney to find out about, I know it's ever been challenged, I'm not sure anything about the one you talked about. But, um, uh, this Fair Housing Act, um, and with that, that's all I have to say.
Now, even though we're going to, we're going to go have our town attorney look at this, there is a, you can't close the public hearing. Because all you're doing is wait, is, is having a, a feat, you know, feedback, it's not going, you know, there's not going to be a public discussion on it, it's the information that's going to be provided.
I don't know if we're, we've got an extension or not.
Well, yeah, she, she said she would, she would grant one if we wanted one, but we can still close the public hearing and still grant the, have an, uh, the extension to the next meeting so we gather.
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need the, we wouldn't need an extension if the public hearing's closed.
Oh, I thought you said we had to take action tonight.
No, 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 so, so just to, just to clarify.
Okay. I.
So there are thirty-five days for the public hearing, it's, we started on January fifth, which would take us to February ninth. But we don't meet again until the sixteenth. So we would have to close the public hearing tonight unless the applicant grants an extension.
Okay.
But if the public hearing is closed, then the commissioner has sixty-five days to make a decision.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. So we would have feedback before that?
Yes, yes, I would hope that we would have feedback at the, for the next public, next meeting, whether it's a public hearing or whether it's closed.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Is there any benefit to us to keep the public hearing open if we get information back from the attorney?
No.
Just clarification on that one clause.
Right, it would just be the, the opportunity for people to rebut the, um, the town attorney's opinion.
So if you want, if you want to close it, then there's a motion, or we're, we're going to have to ask for the extension?
Motion to close it.
Wait, you, you can make a motion.
Make a motion to, uh, close public hearing, P Z application, two thousand sixteen, batch thirteen.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Fran, France, I can do. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Yeah, I agree.
And I'm going to abstain from that.
So who's voting on that, the five of you?
Uh, just, just the four.
Oh, just the four, because.
Yep, yep, just the four.
Trish, okay.
Yep.
So then the, um, item will be continued.
This, so the, the, the item, which is the, any action on this public hearing will be continued to the next planning zoning meeting, which is the.
February sixteenth.
February sixteenth, okay. So, thank you. Get signed with approval, is it, oh, just minutes?
Yes.
Take a two-minute break?
Oh, just make a motion.
Make a motion, make a five-minute break, second.
All in favor?
Two minutes.
Uh, we're, we're adjourned for five minutes.